Everybody hear me all right?
It was Christmas, Tom gave me some new stuff, so I gotta unwrap it then. Hey, everybody, ready? All right, welcome to the Hutchinson City Council meeting for Tuesday, March ninth, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, we'll call the meeting to order. Uh, is there any, uh, approval of the council agenda or any agenda additions or corrections?
Um, Mayor Council, I don't have any additions or corrections tonight.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Oh, second. A motion by Mary, second by Dave. Call a motion. Uh, Mary?
Hi.
Brandon?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Chad?
Hi.
Hi, motion carries, uh, invocations from Riverside Church.
We sit in council, Mayor, let's power heads to pray. Heavenly Father, we invoke your presence here tonight again. We just ask for your guidance and for your wisdom over the council, over all the discussions, Lord, just be here present with your spirit. We commit this time into your hand and we thank you for your divine grace that you always bestow freely in Jesus' mighty name. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, the pledge of allegiance, uh, Dave, you wanna do the Arnold honors again, please?
Absolutely, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Thank you, Dave. Uh, recognitions of gifts, donations, and community service to the city, does anybody have anything tonight? Alrighty, moving on, uh, public comment, uh, Matt, is there anybody that wants to address the council?
Nope, nobody tonight, so.
All right, uh, approval of minutes, we have the regular meeting minutes of February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one, and the workshop of February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one.
Make a motion to approve.
A second.
Motion by Dave, second by Brandon to approve the minutes, any other discussion? Call a motion, uh, Mary?
Hi.
Brandon?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Chad?
Hi.
Hi, motion carries. Next is, uh, the consent agenda, this will be done with one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. Uh, A is approval of issuing short-term gambling license to the Crow River Cutters on May first, two thousand twenty-one, at the McLeod County Fairgrounds. B is approval of issuing short-term gambling license to the Peasants Forever Carver County Chapter on April twelfth, two thousand twenty-one, at two sixty Ottawa Avenue Southeast. Uh, C is approval of the two thousand twenty-one replay applications to the city streets. D is approval of resolution number one five two eight seven, disposal of surplus information technology property. Uh, E is claims appropriations and contract payments, is there anything somebody wants pulled off? Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
Motion by Mary, second by Brandon to approve the consent agenda, any other discussion? Not, I'll call a motion, Mary?
Hi.
Brandon?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Chad?
Hi.
Hi, motion carries. All right, we do have a public hearing, but, uh, we'll run over that till six, um. Next is the Hutchinson Police Services Year End Report, Chief Gibson?
He's here.
Alrighty. The floor is his.
Good thing I was on time, I would've missed my shot.
You know, I don't, I don't have the power to make a call like I do for Chief Schuman, but.
So Matt will share his screen with you, so, um, we get going, but good, good evening to you, Mayor and Council. Um, hopefully you all had a chance to take a look at our year-end report, uh, by this time. Uh, you probably noticed that we've used a little bit different format this year. Uh, we're hoping that, um, it'll be a little easier of a read, but it'll also, uh, make it easier, uh, not only for you, but for the public to have a better understanding of what we do throughout the year. Uh, I wanna be respectful of your time, so, um, I just ask that you hold any questions till the end, um, and then ask away, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you, that you may have. Uh, my PowerPoint presentation's only gonna be just kinda the highlights of our year-end report, so if there's things that you don't see in the PowerPoint that you would've liked to have seen, let me know and I'll, I'll do my best to answer those. Go ahead, man. So, first thing I wanna cover is staffing. This is a snapshot of wh- what our staffing was at year end. Uh, at that time, we had twenty-four sworn officers and twenty civilian staff. Uh, of the twenty-four sworn officers, twenty-three of those are full-time employees and one, uh, the obviously remainder is a part-time employee. Uh, the civilian staff, um, again, this is a snapshot of year end, so, um, you'll notice that our dispatchers, our full-time dispatchers, we only list three there. Uh, we actually had two full-time dispatchers resign, uh, during two thousand twenty, and we made, uh, the decision not to backfill those two positions, uh, because of the, uh, plan for the new building not having a communication center. Um, it was the thought that we would be able to u- utilize our current full-time employees and, uh, the part-time employees that we had to be able to staff it with, uh, again, part-time employees and then some overtime. Um, so far, that's been working okay, uh, again, if we lose another full-time employee, we'll have to take a different look at how we do things. Go ahead, man. Uh, accomplishments, um, so we hired a full-time police officer in twenty twenty. Um, that vacancy, uh, was due to the retirement of Officer Greg NATO, uh, who was a twenty-two, I believe twenty-two-year employee for the city. Um, and so, he retired and we were able to get, uh, one hired, kinda towards the end of the year, um, and matter of fact, she's nearing the end of, uh, field training at this time, so hopefully we'll be at full strength, uh, sometime here in the next few weeks. Secondly, we installed a new target system at the regional training facility. We worked in, uh, in partnership with ATS Targets out of Waconia. They're, um, a target supplier for law enforcement in the military, um, and they had a prototype system that, a rapid response target system they wanted tested. Uh, they contacted us, uh, to see if we'd be willing to, and, uh, we were able to negotiate a deal where they would install the system and after two years of testing, then the system would become ours. Uh, there's a second part of the, that, uh, that agreement as well, that, uh, is well underway at this time. Uh, we also partnered with the park department to make improvements to the law enforcement park. Uh, essentially what that was, uh, is a path, a paved path connecting the loose line trail to our park. Um, and that was done, uh, the materials for that anyway were done completely with, um, donations from the community. Uh, we implemented a standardized post offer, pre-hire, physical fitness testing. Uh, what that is, um, League of Minnesota Cities, I happen to sit on the, the steering committee for this, um, League of Minnesota Cities put together a standardized physical test that all new officers, if you subscribe to the program, uh, can go through, uh, post requirements are that every officer that's hired in the state of Minnesota has to pass a physical, a physical test or a physical examination, uh, which is more than just a medical examination, so, uh, League of Minnesota Cities thought that it would be prudent for them to co- standardize, um, that's, that portion of it to protect the cities, um, against any kind of, uh, lawsuit saying that somebody was unfairly eliminated from a, from a testing process. So that was put together, uh, towards the end of two thousand twenty, um, we, actually, the officer that we hired most recently, we wasn't completed in time, uh, but, so we have yet to actually utilize it, but it is implemented and we intend to go forward with that in the, in two thousand twenty-one. Excuse me. Um, also, we completed a transition to our new physical fitness assessment for all HPD, police, and security officers. Um, if you're familiar with what we used to do, it used to be, uh, some physical tests, um, push-ups, sit-ups, that type of thing, and then an obstacle course, um, that system was no longer being supported by the organization that standardized it, uh, and so we felt there was a need to find something different and, uh, we looked to the, uh, Texas Department of Public Safety and their physical fitness standard, which is essentially, uh, a rowing test, um, to, to satisfy that, and so that we've now officially, uh, gone through that twice, uh, most recently here this spring. Uh, and it seems to be very well received, uh, to this point anyway, by all the officers, even though it is, uh, a fairly difficult test to complete. Uh, next one, thanks, uh, so accomplishments, technology part of our accomplishments. Uh, we replaced our obsolete rescue phone, and again, that was through donations, our rescue phone, uh, is more for our cri- critical incident negotiators. Um, it's, it's a way for us to be able to make contact with a subject or suspect, um, without the use of a cellphone, so they're not interrupted by other, uh, communications or anything like that, and it also puts a, um, a direct line into, to that person, so we can have uninterrupted communications. Uh, we purchased a traffic speed radar trailer, uh, last year, um, our main use for that is speed monitoring, but it also does traffic counts and, uh, does traffic surveys for us in neighborhoods around the city. It's a smaller trailer, so it fits in all our residential areas as well, so we can use this to, uh, to investigate complaints of excessive speed when it's unwitnessed. Um, and so this is something that I'm, we're really looking forward to implementing more often this spring, uh, we purchased this towards the end of last year, and, uh, there was a little bit of a learning curve with it, and so I think we're prepared to go and full implementation this spring. And then, lastly, we replaced our portable radios, uh, you guys, uh, for the most part, probably remember, uh, me coming before you and talking about this prior, but, uh, those portable radios provide us with greater statewide interoperability, uh, more specifically, uh, statewide resources that use encryption, um, and so those items, uh, are, so that helps us out in that respect, and then it also allows for clear communication, or at least the prod, the project did, because as a part of the project, the tactical team also, uh, got new communication systems, so headsets and, and boom mics, um, for a much clean, cleaner and clearer communication, and as you can imagine, in situations such as those, um, that communication is essential, so it was a great benefit, and so I, I thank you all for that as well. Next slide. So, now more for the statistical stuff, I'll try not to get too in-depth with this, again, it's, uh, all this is included in our year-end report. So, at, at the end of the presentation, if you have a more specific question, feel free to answer. But part one crimes, uh, the FBI classifies as those as the serious crimes, so crimes like murder and aggravated assault, most types of things. Um, our stats in this area, uh, declined, uh, through two thousand twenty, which is a good thing, I think it's, um, somewhat COVID-related, uh, just like everything else has been, but, uh, the only exception to the, um, the stat that I have here was murder. Um, in two thousand nineteen, we, we didn't report any, and two thousand twenty, uh, we actually had a drug overdose at one of the convenience stores here in town, and we, uh, submitted, um, those reports to the county attorney requesting, uh, murder charges against the supplier of those drugs. Um, ultimately, those charges were declined, just that the county attorney felt that they weren't gonna be able to prove the case. Uh, and I have since found out from the BCA that, uh, the FBI, although a lot of cities charge that way, the, the FBI doesn't recognize an overdose as a murder, um, their terminology is, it, it's not an intentional kill, so it doesn't count it in that category, so if we're going by the FBI's, uh, stats, which I guess we should, um, we're actually zero, so we remain, uh, the same as two thousand nineteen in that regard as well. Uh, part two, oh, go ahead, man, next one, thanks, part two crimes, uh, again, the FBI, uh, characterized these as less serious crimes. To Hutch PD, we don't consider them less crimes, if you're the victim of these crimes, I'm sure you don't consider them to be a lesser crime, uh, but that's more of a, a statistical description more than anything else, obviously, we still take them very seriously. Um, and again, most of our, uh, part two crimes went down in two thousand twenty. Um, again, this is, this, we believe it's a trend because of COVID, partly because of COVID. Um, and there just wasn't as many people out all of the twenty-nine, or twenty-twenty as there was the previous year. Um, there, there is an exception to the downward trend and, um, disorderly conduct, drunkenness, uh, which could be anything from bringing someone to detox or, uh, underage consumption, anything like that, uh, drug violations, and then DUIs, all those, uh, are those four actually increased slightly, uh, in two thousand twenty, and again, I think, um, you know, I, I'm probably gonna go back to this way too many times, but because of COVID, uh, you know, people are staying home, people are drinking more, it's, I mean, that's why the liquor store made so much more money last year than they did, uh, previously, um, so, um, I, that's what we're attributing it to anyway, and then we haven't seen anything to prove us otherwise, just to go back to part one crimes a little, you don't have to go back, Matt, but I just wanted to, uh, larger cities are experiencing actually an increase in, in part one crimes, um, for a number of reasons, uh, COVID, um, civil unrest, those types of things, um, and I'm happy to report, uh, proud to report that, uh, Hutchinson has not seen that same uptick, so, uh, our aim in two thousand twenty-one is to keep it that way. Go ahead. So, calls for service, as soon as he gets there. All right, uh, calls for service, um, and arrests, uh, both of the, every, so a calls for service is anything uh, from a request from a citizen for, to self-initiated activity like a traffic stop on the part of the officer. Uh, in two thousand nineteen, obviously twenty thousand calls for service, and we're, again, what I would consider a significant decrease in two thousand twenty of almost three thousand calls, so, um, again, people are home more often than they have been in the past. The, the likelihood that a crime is gonna be committed at home is less because people are home, all those things contribute to, to the, the decrease. Um, and I, I think that we do a very good job of being proactive, uh, in the community, and so we're not just out doing traffic, but we're busy patrolling communities and, and, uh, you know, that's our number one priority is keeping the community safe, so, um, that's another reason for that. Uh, thefts, medical emergencies, property damage calls, they continue to be our most common calls for service. Um, and then, uh, the last little graph there is just peak hours for calls for service for Hutch PD are between ten AM and three PM. So I think this is, this is especially one of those statistics that we're gonna wanna keep an eye on as we move forward through two thousand twenty-one, and when, um, when we as a PD and you as a council start to decide, uh, what are our, our new public office hours are gonna be at, at a new police station. And, uh, we're gonna continue to monitor this, um, and the calls for service by day of week as well, and I think that those are some statistics that are gonna guide us to making some decisions in that respect. Go ahead. Uh, child protection, um, so, uh, government's role, or one of its primary roles is to protect its citizens, and, uh, so at, at the police department, that is our goal, but we have a goal on top of that goal, and it's to protect the, the most vulnerable, and so there's probably little peop- or few people would argue that children are probably some of the most vulnerable, uh, citizens that we have, so it's a very high priority for us at the police station, or at the police department, uh, so much so that we have dedicated an investigator just to, uh, child protection services, and it's a little unique, uh, most, while all other, uh, cities within the county, uh, rely on the sheriff's office to do that, uh, but we, again, put a high priority on that, and so we, uh, take care of that, those duties are our own, and we work almost daily with McLeod County Social Services, uh, to screen intakes, investigate, uh, reports of child neglect. The chart really shows just, uh, um, you know, how we categorize the calls after they come in, um, our three most prevalent calls, uh, regarding child protection is abuse, uh, fit, uh, neglect, abuse physical, and then either drugs or alcohol in the home. Um, the investigator that's assigned to child protection does have a secondary duty, and that's, um, also, he's in charge of our predatory offender registration, uh, compliance, and, uh, again, just one more way we keep the community safe by ensuring that everybody that's supposed to register registers, and, uh, we do monthly screenings of those folks, or at least check-ins, just to make sure they, they're where they say that, reporting they are, and if they aren't, then we forward, uh, to the county attorney or city attorney for criminal charges. Uh, so, I think this is, yeah, getting down to the end here, so, uh, body and squad cameras. Um, I'm having a difficult time reading the, the numbers on the screen, so I thought I'd, I'd be able to do that from where I'm standing.
You put it together.
Yeah, some, something with my age or my eyesight more than probably the screen, but, um, basically, the, the city of Hutchinson, approximately three, four years ago, uh, established a body camera, uh, program, prior to that, we had already established a squad camera program, uh, but when we brought the body cameras on, it was, uh, combined program at that time, and all of our, uh, cameras, we essentially leased through, uh, Axon, which is this, uh, yes, Axon's the parent company, Taser, uh, would be the other, uh, leg of that company. Um, so, the stats that I have on the chart, uh, we have a number of videos, and, I don't know, Tom, can you help me a little bit? What's that, is it three thousand, almost three thousand videos? Downloaded in, during two thousand twenty?
Yeah, for active videos?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so, um, so during the, the top one is just a snapshot, so that's what we had in there as of December thirty-first, and, um, and then the, the active videos, when we took the, the snapshot later in the spring, or later in the winter, I guess we're, I should keep telling myself we're still in the winter here, but, uh, that's what was active, so what normally happens is the officers upload their videos every day, or it's actually done automatically, um, both from their squad and their body camera, um, goes in, there's a retention schedule for every video. Um, if the, if there's a citation or arrest made, then they have a longer retention schedule, but, uh, by far, the majority of our videos are probably, uh, only have like a thirty-day retention on them, because our policy says that every contact that we have with the, the community, um, the, the camera should be on, so there's a lot of video in there that only lasts thirty days and goes away, but, um, and then, when it's stored, it's stored, we don't sup- our, we don't house the server here, it's actually stored on, uh, evidence.com's cloud. Um, so, Tom could probably speak to more than what the, the gigabytes or how much that is, uh, total, but I can tell you that's an awful lot. Um, I think we average probably close to three thousand or four thousand videos a month that we're uploading to that system. Um, so, the only thing I could say, uh, about it is it's been nothing but a blessing for Hutchinson PD and the city of Hutchinson, um, I have yet to encounter a time where, um, where a citizen has made a complaint and it supports their complaint, um, every time, it's supported the police officer's, uh, point of view, and, uh, again, I can't say anything, um, bad about it, um, and the officers, you know, once the initial, uh, acclimation period, I guess, started, then, I mean, they've had nothing but good things to say about it as well, so, um, that's it with the body and squad cameras, uh, man, two thousand twenty-one goals. Uh, like to re-establish the city's citizens' police academy, this was a goal last year, um, and quite frankly, uh, we didn't have the interest that we thought we would, so, that's on us, we have to get out there and market that a little bit better this year than we did last time around, um, and, uh, and so we intend to do that, but the ultimate goal of that program is not only to, to educate the, the community as to what we do, but to drill down a little bit further, what we ultimately like to get to is to partner with the Hutchinson School District and part of their Tiger Path program, and so students would able, be able to earn credit, uh, high school credit for attending our police academy. Uh, so, as we, as spring comes to an end here, or to a start, uh, we'll start having conversations with the high school again regarding that. Um, we'd also like to create modified procedures to accommodate a new pu- police facility, so obviously with a new police facility, there's, the way we do business now is not gonna, we're not gonna be able to do that in the future. There's, uh, some things that help support us now that we'll be missing, um, there's policies that we have now that won't be, uh, relevant then, and so, uh, really, that's, for our administrative staff, that's one of the things that we have to do is just really go through our policy procedures again this year and really come up with creative ways to, uh, to operate the police facility after, uh, when we move into the new facility. Obviously, we'd like to be able to finish the design for the new facility, uh, which, uh, hopefully later on this evening, goes a long way towards that. Uh, work with Wald Architects and the Contiguity Group to complete the new facility. Um, the hope is, is that we get it under construction sometime this, uh, summer, and we also need to plan and implement PSAP consolidation with McLeod, with McLeod County, um, PSAP or Communication Center. Uh, again, there's no plans for that in the new police station, so, um, we're gonna be asking McLeod County to take over the responsibilities for us, and that's not something you can just do in one day and flip the switch, so we'll have, uh, some planning to do with that as well. And then, lastly, just continue to implement our wellness program within the police department, I think we've come, uh, quite a few, or quite a way in the last few years, and, um, I hope to get us where we wanna be here sometime in two thousand twenty-one, and I think, uh, obviously, those goals, um, will probably end, at least my, my goal, personal goal, is for those goals to come to an end when we move into our new police station. So, uh, that's all I have, uh, for you all tonight, um, I'm more than happy to answer, like I said, any questions regarding the PowerPoint presentation, which I thought were kind of our highlights, or if you have anything related to the actual year-end report, I'd be happy to answer.
Uh, Chief Gibson, uh, the training site, uh, how, how far do you pull in people for, for using? Uh Chief Gibson, uh the training site, uh how how far do you pull in people for for using using that?
Um it's mostly uh if we're pulling from outside McLeod County, it's usually from the West Metro. Although we do have a couple of federal agencies that use it and a couple of state agencies that use it as well. And obviously, when those people come out to train, we're pulling people from all over the state and actually may quite possibly the Midwest.
And uh on the the phones, uh do you offhand know who all contributed for that?
Uh not right offhand. I could guess, but I would hate to be wrong.
All right, that's all I have. Does anybody else have anything for Chief Gibson?
Hey, Tom, I have a question for you.
All right.
Can you tell me what simple assault is?
Simple assault? Uh well, so it's a little, it's it's a little difficult to define because FBI defines their assaults differently than the state of Minnesota defines ours. So you have simple assault or aggravated assault, and usually aggravated assault um involves a deadly weapon, great bodily harm. Uh any other kind of assault than physical assault would be simple assault, if that makes sense. Um the state of Minnesota, you know, categorizes into five different degrees of assault. And so, you know, depending on where you're at with the FBI, they can be two different things.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Anything else for for Chief Gibson? If not, oh, Tom, thank you very much, Chief.
All right, appreciate it. Thanks for listening.
All right, we'll go back to uh the public hearing, uh review of the small city development. C S C D P rental rehab program, Southdale Apartments.
Judy, are you coming? I'll get my screen up here.
Good afternoon. I'm Judy Fleming, Program Coordinator of Hutchinson H R A. Matt is getting the PowerPoint. Perfect. So second page. So we requested and were awarded the maximum small cities grant amount. The PI or program income are funds that were repaid from the past small cities projects. So we had to use them plus what is shown on the total small cities cost. The small cities deferred grant is seventy percent of the total rehab costs. The owner does have have to contribute thirty percent. And his funds came from a second mortgage through a Greater Minnesota Housing Fund, which is an organization that we've worked in the past with. Um and then they their own company had to come up with funds. This is a big point. The deferred grant requires that fifty one percent of the units be occupied by low to moderate income households at an affordable rent, and that is set by HUD. On an annual basis, if the owner meets this criteria, which I do monitor on an annual basis, they have to give me all the documents, twenty percent of the loan will be forgiven each year for the five years. The project timeline. So this is different than when I first proj- project uh presented the the timeline to you. Deed awarded, awards announced were in June, and then right away, we started um the 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 paperwork, which includes the contracts, the deed startup checklist, federal requirements, the big one is the environmental review. And once we achieved the clearance, then, which was in August, August of two thousand and nineteen, then Kyle Dimler, um building official, and I went out and did the inspections of the of the property. With the results from the inspections, we came up with the scope of work and bid documents. So December of nineteen, two thousand and nineteen, the bids were due. And then it took time from December to February to finalize the owner match funds. Um so in February, the contract was awarded to Project One Construction out of Kimball. And then after that, you can see the asterisk COVID nineteen delayed our schedule. Um there was a lot of concerns with contractors going into rehab uh occupied rental complex. And once the um contractor talked to his attorneys and their insurance company and stuff, then we were able to in May um do the loan closing for the small cities loan. And July, we moved on to the pre-construction meeting. And August was when we were able to issue the notice to proceed and the construction rehab started right away. And it went really fast, in my opinion. Um they are pretty much done right now. Uh however, the one item that we're waiting on is a boiler replacement in the big building. Um the the heat has to be turned off for the replacement, so that will be happening spring, hopefully, spring, summer, and that's when we'll close out the project, which is ahead of the contract that we the city had with deed. We had to have the funds obligated by September of two thousand and twenty two, so we're ahead. Next slide. The project improvements. So I know we've all drove by and seen it, so I've got more pictures, but the big thing was, and I don't know why I put this first, it should be the stucco siding structural sheathing replacement. We could all see the Boeing siding. But also the windows, and then the in the big building, the patio doors needed to be replaced. Another big item was asbestos removal. Another one, which I know that John could probably attest to, was there was drainage water issues. So um we had drainage improvements, some exterior lighting, and the parking repair replacement. Another big issue, and it was in one of the small buildings though, was um the units had the Federal Pacific electrical panels, which have known to had issues in the past. One thing that I think that some people um are probably wondering about were the actual units. So the miscellaneous interior health and safety issues. There really wasn't a lot of issues that we had to um had funding to address. But we did have some health and safety issues, which included holes in the wall, hole in the ceiling, some of the um unit doors weren't functioning safely. Um and then the other big item was miscellaneous HVAC. Um we had some uh like plumbing issues in some of the units. And then, of course, the mechanical systems that we've talked about. This here is pictures that were taken during interim uh construction inspections by the building department. So they started on the Dale Street building, the big one, and you can see that there were definite sheathing replacement issues. So these are some of the extras that had to be done on the Dale Street building. And then they moved on to South Grade building, which is one of the little ones. Um and that one was very disappointing. As you can see, after they took off the siding, we had to have total sheathing replacement. Um plus, on the next slide, there was a lot of deterioration on the the window framing due to the stucco and water drainage, and it just, yep, it was, it was the contractor was very disappointed when he found that, but it's better now. Next one. So the last building they did was the Neal Avenue Building. And thankfully, after Dale having some issues and or and then Southdale having tons of issue, as you can see, there were not very many issues with the sheathing or window replacement on the Neal Building. However, that was the one that had the most asbestos, so yeah, it's all different. Next one. And these are just some before and after. So you can see there were um some tripping hazards with the concrete in the entrance. And you can see the drainage issues in the parking lot in the bottom. This one here is before and after, but I kind of want to point out that um the engineering department also had um a project with the path. So you can see in the middle pictures um the before and after of the new path along there. And then they also worked um with the owner on replacing the boulevard trees, which you can see on the bottom slide. Um top one is just a obvious, when you drive on South Grade, you could see the before and after. And then the little bit of interior pictures that we had. The one on the left is asbestos flooring that was a major tripping hazard. And then they do have um accessible entrances, but they were also getting very deteriorated. So those are the before and afters of the interior pictures. Any questions or comments?
I have a question for you. What about the decks that are on on the building? They look like they're still the old decks and they haven't been rehabbed. Are you going to do those or not?
So we only had the the certain amount of money, so that went to the exterior of the siding and sheathing replacement windows. However, because we are working with Greater Minnesota Housing Fund, they have uh I think it's a twenty year loan with them, and they put in a a replacement budget, and that is part of that, so it will be addressed. And the owner has um talked to me, and he would like it done this spring. So hopefully, we can get that done too.
Great. Well, thank you. That building looks a hundred percent better, and I'm sure the tenants are thrilled.
Thank you.
Uh anything else for Judy?
I would have one question. This is Dave. Uh what year was that building built?
So they were built in three different years. So I have the Neal and the South Grade, so the two little ones, they were built in nineteen seventy five. And then the big one was built in nineteen seventy nine.
Thank you. I just, just an age thing was it for with me, so I guess not a big.
It it was very interesting. I didn't expect the smaller ones were built first. I would have thought the big one would have been. And the the timing was different, and I don't think from looking at past building permits that they did much on it since the beginning. So this was a major, major rehab.
Very good. Thank you.
All right, if uh nobody else has any questions, we can open it up for a public comment.
Mayor, I don't see anybody here to address the council.
All right, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Let's take it in.
Motion by Mary, second by Dave, to close the public hearing. Roll call, Mary. Brandon.
Hi.
Dave.
Hi.
Chad.
Hi.
Hi. Motion carries.
Um Mayor, can I just maybe recommend, because I'm feeling generous tonight, that we do item number eleven, so Mr. Kosek can leave if he wants to? And then we could jump to item ten, so.
All right, as long as Andy will be nice to us. All right, uh we'll go to new business then.
Be nice to me.
Purchase of bagging line equipment for Creekside. Andy.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Council. Um as stated in the board action forum, we have a bit of an opportunity to save some money in the long run over time. Um unfortunately, there's a catch, and that means we need to spend more money now in order to realize the savings later, so um as mentioned also in the board action forum, just a little recap is, excuse me. The Compost Fund has fifty thousand budgeted in two thousand and twenty one's capital improvement plan for a hopper replacement and sixty three thousand in two thousand and twenty two for a volumetric feeder replacement. Here in the recent months, as conversations started to heat up with the with the vendor Premier Tech, our bagging line manufacturer, they advised us at that point that it would be highly advantageous and recommended to replace an additional conveyor um with these units all at the same time. Instead of doing multiple projects over the next two years, doing it all at once. So this uh this additional conveyor is the conveyor that transfers the material from the outdoor hopper to the volumetric feeder on the bagging machine inside the building. A lot of that reasoning is simply because the old equipment, it's a two thousand, it's a building well, the machine was installed in the late nineties, ninety nine, maybe early two thousand. But obviously, the the equipment is technologically very different from from what they're producing today. So in terms of modifications and just the the different components trying to mate together, it's it's immensely advantageous to both parties, both the vendor and us as the customer, to to seek out, trying to do this all in in one project. Um as mentioned, one hundred and thirteen thousand budgeted over the next two years. The the total all at once project cost for this was a hundred is a hundred and fifty six thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars, with that unbudgeted conveyor accounting for approximately thirty two thousand. So in reality, if you back that thirty two thousand out, the budgetary numbers aren't too too far off. But uh if we were to remain as scheduled and do multiple projects, part of it this year, remaining balance next year, the total project cost would be closer to a hundred and eighty three thousand at today's numbers, and I'm not including any future price increases, so. Back when we started this conversation back in two thousand and eighteen, I believe, um when it entered the the capital improvement plan, the quoted prices then were basically twenty five percent less than they are today. So in other words, we've seen a twenty five percent price increase in about two, maybe two and a half years. So not uh not knowing what would happen in the next year if we split this up, I just I feel that it's it's definitely in in our favor to to try to do this year this year. Um the finance department has reviewed the proposed project and purchases and provided us favorable feedback to proceed as presented. Um purchasing all three components this year. Um I think this is mostly due to the to the good year that the Compost Fund experienced last year um with regards to sales. Uh the the good sales obviously minimized the projected negative impact to our cash reserves um for other larger capital expenditures. We, if you recall, we purchased a large trommel screener that we've ended up paying cash for because of the the good, the good sales season we had last year. So um furthermore, on top of that, there are two other sizable capital expenditure projects that are budgeted in the capital or excuse me, in the Compost Fund this year that will not be completed for for various reasons. But um those two total, the total of those two projects adds uh comes up to be about a little over a hundred thousand dollars, so. In a way, when you look at this, by moving the two thousand and twenty two project up this year, adding the additional thirty two thousand dollar conveyor, it comes out to be a net wash in terms of capital expenditures this year. So we really shouldn't see any negative impact in our overall capital costs for for the year, so. Um okay, I threw a lot at you. That's really about all I have. Open it up. Questions, comments?
Andy, that old system, how many bags has that bagged in the last, since it's been put in? Quite a few.
Uh part of the documentation that Dan put together on this, I believe it was just north of twenty seven million bags. A little over thirty five thousand hours on the on the on the line on, which computes to about twenty seven, a little over twenty seven million bags. So it's 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 time to replace some of these components.
Thanks, Andy. We entertain a motion to for the purchase of bagging line equipment.
And make a motion to approve it.
I will second it. Motion by Chad, second by myself, to purchase the bagging line equipment for Creekside. Any other discussion? Call a motion, Mary.
Aye.
Brandon.
Hi.
Dave.
Hi.
Chad.
Hi.
Hi, motion carries. Thanks, Andy.
Thank you.
All right, uh, going back uh to communications requests petitions, uh, update on site layout and design of the new police station and estimated project timeline and cost.
Um, Mayor and Council, um, we've got obviously several members here tonight. We've got John McNamara from Wold. We've got Pete from Contiguity, along with Paige from uh Wold, and then uh the chief and I, and even Andy Reed to kind of help answer any questions. But I think the last time there was an update to the council and the public was in early December. And so um we're getting to that phase of where we um are getting closer and closer to to getting to to the point where we're going to bid this project out. Um, and so we wanted to be able to give an update to the council, especially before the plans go to the planning commission for um consideration. So I guess with that, I'll probably turn over to to John to to go through the the presentation. Um, and then I know Chief Giperson and myself will will add some more towards the end of the uh of John's presentation tonight. Go ahead, John.
Hey, thanks, Pat. Uh, you want me to share my screen?
Yep, go ahead. I think uh you should have access to go ahead and share your screen, so.
Is that showing up okay there?
It's showing up on like half the screen. There we go. Now it's better, so.
All right. Uh, well, Mayor and Council, thanks for having us here tonight. Uh, tonight is really just an update on where we're at in the design process. We are at the completion of the heavy design work, uh thanks to a lot of effort from uh the chief and his team, our construction partner at Contiguity, and uh city staff. And so where we're at tonight is we'd like to present our site plan, building diagrams. We're going to talk a little bit about our design concepts and some materials that we have. Uh, we have uh some of the um abbreviated budget discussions as far as where we are, which will feed into uh Matt and Andy's presentation on the financing piece of it, and then kind of where we are thinking our next steps will be for schedule. So this first diagram that you have here is our um final site plan. Uh, this is uh also being reviewed by uh the planning department and going to eventually going to planning commission. Um, so you can see by this of this diagram, we are fully occupying the corner of First and Adams. Some part of this project uh will also look at kind of the site circulation and flow. So we've been working with the engineering department on uh securing access out onto Adams Street uh where the police vehicles will exit onto the site and also will be able to maneuver uh the uh delivery trucks for the liquor store. Uh, we are putting a a parking, a secure parking area between the liquor store and the police station to kind of not only protect those vehicles, but also to screen those garage doors that are going to be on that side. Uh, as part of the site circulation part of it, uh we are working with the engineering department to do a road through the site to provide uh access to a parking area that will serve the uh D M B portion of the building and the emergency operations center, and also allow us to reconfigure the parking for the liquor store. It still leaves a considerable amount of site uh on the west side to be able to redevelop for a parking uh or other uh things that might want to occur in there. And so there's some ancillary things that council could consider as part of this. Uh, we are also looking to reconstruct the corner of uh First and Adams to create some monumentation and some presence along uh First Avenue as you circulate past the police department. And we are going to have some public parking uh out in front of the police department off of First to allow us to uh access the the main front entry of the building. This next slide is our floor plan of the building, so we are still tracking roughly around thirty six thousand full square feet, which does exclude the D M B, but the D M B portion of it's a little over two thousand square feet, uh which is in the gray over in this area here. The main entry to the police department in that lobby is located uh directly across from Veterans Park. The vision for this entry uh is to allow the public to come into the building and meet with patrol officers or administrative staff in a secure location. We have a nice large uh reception counter that faces the north. Uh, but I want to highlight one of the interview rooms off of the main lobby is what we're also calling the safe room, which has a door into our twenty four hour vestibule. So if somebody comes to the police department after hours, because there's no longer a uh dispatch center here, um, we wanted to have a secure location and a safe location for somebody to to wait in the facility for official officer to come meet with the station after hours. Uh, we also have a a second interview room and a conference room off of that lobby to allow for some of those conversations to occur uh in a a private location rather than out in the lobby, which is what occurs right now. Uh, directly over here on the right hand side is our our administration area, uh partnered up with our investigations, uh which now, as the council knows, is over in the uh emergency operations building, and so having those all co-located together is a great benefit to the police department. Uh, our patrol area flanks it on the other side uh with our evidence processing area nicely located adjacent to our patrol function uh and directly off of our uh fleet services garage. Uh, our garage area is sized for twenty vehicles. Uh, and in that garage, we're also going to have a uh vehicle processing area um that will also then feed into our evidence storage area. Uh, that can be either fenced off in a situation where there is a vehicle, or it can be used for other stuff if there isn't a vehicle that needs to be processed in there. Um, we have a small break room for the building that'll be located off the Adams side of the building with an outdoor patio that'll be screened from the road. And then also central in the building is our uh male and female locker rooms, our tactical lockers, which will feed into our tactical garage, uh and then a smaller garage for impounded vehicles or for large property storage. Uh, we are creating a booking area in here, so it's a smaller booking area for just a four hour hold. So we'll have three holding cells in here, a couple of small interview rooms, and a secure garage for bringing uh people that are in custody into the booking area. Uh, as part of the uh project, one of the things that we have to provide for in our public safety facilities now in Minnesota is a storm shelter. And so we are going to dual purpose of this fitness area also be our storm shelter for the building. This is a new code requirement that came into place in twenty twenty uh that requires us to create a storm shelter that serves the total occupants of the building itself. And so that is where we're going to locate uh that particular component. To the north of that is our emergency operations center, some public restrooms, uh and our lobby for uh motor vehicles. Uh, we've met with motor vehicles to create uh some expanded uh service desk for them, staff space, a small break room for them. And uh we are creating a um walk-up window for licensed staff and stuff like that to uh uh speed up that process and to alleviate some of the load on the uh the main lobby area. Our main circulation throughout the building kind of center is centralized around what we're calling a mudroom, which is where our officers will have access to their duty bags, uh so those won't be stored out in the garage. And also a counter area here for uh technology for those body cams that the chief has talked about. So we've integrated all of that into kind of the centralized uh location. So I want to spend a little bit of time on tonight. The exciting part for us is really developing the architectural solution for the building. And so one of the things that we started to look at was what would be the appropriate materials for this building? How can we transition this building from uh kind of the existing um account of foods um that's there on the site into what was done at the liquor store and some of the retail stuff? But also create an identity that kind of looks back at what um some of the other municipal buildings are uh in town. And so what we are suggesting is as we transition between our new building and the liquor store, that our tactical garage is a great location for us to kind of transition our more traditional materials of brick and and um stone to a precast construction that's very durable uh and will work really well for our vehicle garage. Uh, the design of that precast will be similar to some of the uh patterns and uh texture of what's at the liquor store uh right now. So it's a great transition piece between that retail and our municipal building. Uh, we are uh doing a reddish brown brick, which is very similar to the brick that's out on site right now. And uh we'd like to uh really highlight our entries, not only for the police department, but also for the E O C and motor vehicles. And again, this entry is directly across from Veterans Park, so we want to pick up on some of the stone materials uh that are uh native to the river environment and also some of the black material that's on the site. We're not suggesting that we would like to use granite on it. I think the granite material that's used for monuments is is a difficult material to use for entries, but we'd like that darker material, and we're going to do that out of uh rainscreen metal panels, a nice durable material that'll allow us to pick up on some of the uh um monumentation that's over at Veterans Park. So we've done a couple of renderings for people to kind of get a feel for what the building might look like from a couple of different locations. So this is uh standing in the intersection of First and Adams Street looking towards the front entry. You can see uh that we are proposing to uh um expand and add some some soft landscaping and some black poles on the corner of uh the intersection right there at First and Adams Street. This is our brick material. And what we wanted to do is kind of break down the mass of that brick material by adding a different uh material where the windows are. Because one of the things that we we'd like to not do for the police department is have uh strip windows like what you might see in a retail environment. But we like that feel of having those larger openings. And so this is a way to kind of make those openings look larger, but still have windows that are appropriate for law enforcement uh facility. We have a little bit of stone at the entry that I talked about that kind of reflects back to the stone that's used in the parks and along the riverfront. Uh, we will have a little bit of a stair at the front entry just because of the elevation difference. For those that uh have been over by the existing account of foods, there's about a three foot elevation drop between the parking lot and the intersection and Adams Street. So we'll have a a few stairs, which will again highlight the front entry and give a more formal feel to the front of the building. Uh, and then we'll soften it with uh some plants up and around the building. And then as we turn the corner and look towards where the uh front of motor vehicles and uh E O C might be, uh this is right off the parking lot, my area itself. So we're at the on the smaller scales, take some of those similar materials into the front entry so that we have a commonality between those two uh locations. So um that it's easy for people to identify that this is an entrance for motor vehicles. It will have its own separate parking area there, and then we have some signage and monumentation that will draw people back to where the police entry is. There is a small entry over here, which is the entry uh that leads into that storm shelter and emergency operations center, but it's also our discrete release lobby from the uh detention area. So if somebody is coming to pick somebody up or if somebody is released, no longer will that occur through the uh the front lobby, um which we think is a great, that will be a great change for this facility. As we look to the interior of the building, we've been working with our material palette with the police department to um look at materials that are a little bit softer, uh a little bit more in in tune with the uh the river and the nature environment, but still have some commonality back to our police departments. We have some soft pastels and blues and um kind of that coppery color. We are going to use a little bit of uh glass tile in this blue color in our uh restrooms, some common areas. Uh, a very fairly durable uh carpet for the main uh hallways and office areas. We have a rubber floor in our uh fitness uh facility, our locker rooms. So we are going to put a carpet in there, but it's a carpet that's specifically designed to be resistant to water and traffic. Uh, so that gives a little bit softer feel in locker rooms, but it's extremely durable uh and cleanable for maintenance staff. We have a few woods that we're bringing into the building to bring that natural feel into the building, not only for our doors, but in some uh public areas where our um lobbies are. And then some uh floor tile will be also in these uh high traffic areas. So this is a rendering of the main entry lobby area. You can see this is where our uh large records window is. The idea is to bring daylighting into the uh records and administration area uh through that north side of the building. You can kind of see a reflection in this window uh of where the glass is in the main entry there, which is going to bring a lot of daylighting into that space. Uh, we're keeping a higher ceiling volume in there with some of those wood features to kind of bring that uh material uh into the inside of the building, uh this some display cases. And um again, bringing some of that stone material in so what is reflected uh at the main exterior entry also has a tie to the interior of the building. This is a uh a quick image of our control area. We have uh some daylighting coming in on the north side. Uh, we wanted to bring some of that wood into this large open office area uh where our flexible furniture will be for our patrol staff. There are a couple of of smaller dictation rooms for those that need a little bit more privacy for doing report writing. Uh, and then a collaboration area where uh the patrol can gather and talk about what's going, what's going on for the day or what's going on. So uh with that, uh where are we, where we are with uh cost on the project? I think that uh you all received a more detailed memo from uh from Matt as to the total project cost of the project. But uh we have some uh just some categories of numbers to look at. Uh, we do have a sizable amount of demolition, so this demolition number includes the demolition of the um existing account of foods. Uh, we have some money, we have um some money in the budget uh also to uh reconstruct the um wall of the liquor store and create a separation in that area. That'll be, our plan for that is that we're going to build the new masonry wall inside the existing grocery store so that we get a complete dust separation between the liquor store and the demolition of the grocery store so that our, the liquor store can um maintain operations. I did want to highlight that we are carrying roughly about seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars in the budget to um construct the motor vehicle uh office area. So I know that was something that was added to the project, so we wanted to make sure to highlight that for council. Uh, we have included in the budget um some money for furniture and equipment for the facility, some audio visual equipment for the CAD monitors that are in the office areas and for the emergency operations center. And then about, you know, uh eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars for an overall project contingency. Uh, so that's kind of those broad categories, and I know that uh Matt and Andy are going to go through a more detailed uh conversation on the budget. But I also wanted to highlight um where we're at with uh the overall project. We are in the process of finishing up the the construction documents, the bidding documents. Um, Pete and his team uh would like to get those from us in early April, so about a month from now to do a final review of that, put their work scopes together on it, and do a quality check on it. Uh, a week or so later, we're going to be asking council to go out to bid for the project. We're targeting May thirteenth for the bid day on it, uh and coming back to council on the twenty fifth for final approval. There's a little bit of flexibility in here. We do have to go to planning commission as well and get approval. And so once we go through that process, uh it'll come to council to as well, once the planning commission approves it as well. So as the chief said, we are looking for uh an early summer construction to start if everything goes according to plan. So with that, Mayor and Council, I would turn it back over to you for any questions or to Matt for further conversation on budget.
Tom, do you wanna address the council first and then we can sure get into some of the. John, if you wanna maybe not share your screen anymore?
Try, see if I can stop sharing.
Well, hello again.
I'm not as good with teams.
I think Tom can help you too, so.
Well, we can certainly get started, I don't have any uh audio visual aids for this presentation, so um. Matt and I were just speaking uh earlier this week and just thought maybe there would, I'm sure there's some questions you're gonna have regarding the. The building and and where where we're at today and where we started. Um so maybe I start out just by a little bit of a a history lesson. Um you know, this project really started uh back in twenty seventeen when we started talking about it. Um and at that time, uh obviously I wasn't the chief of police, Chief Hatton was, but um so we started that program at that time. Um and our numbers have certainly changed over those three years of planning. And um you know, I just thought I'd maybe talk to you about some of the significant changes that I see. And maybe some rationale behind it, or maybe try to answer some of your questions before you actually ask them, so. Um you know, some of the major square footage changes in the in the building, well, let me back up first. There were two main reasons for for the for the the belief that we needed a new police station. Number, first reason, uh space requirements, we currently have outgrown our our current facility. Um and uh so we wanted to start looking at um the the idea of of. Either remodeling, rebuilding, uh expanding again, you know, whatever we needed to do. Um all those scenarios kind of went by the wayside when, you know, we had several tours of the of our facilities. And I think a consensus was reached at that time that, you know, really what needed to happen is just the new facility needed to be constructed. Um the second reason was because of the inefficiencies that our current facility has just by um design, I guess. Um you know, I think yeah, our current facility, uh the main building anyway, was completed in nineteen eighty nine. And I think they started their first major uh remodeling on it within five years of that date. Um so if you look at our uh the plans of the building, they look, our current building. Um looks nothing like those those blueprints did from nineteen eighty nine. Um so going forward, if we decided we're good, we wanna build a new building, let's not make the same mistake twice. Let's build for what we think we need now, but also what we think we're gonna need in fifteen, twenty years down the road. So um so the chief hopefully will not be me at that time, could come before you again. And uh you know, won't have to ask for a new building again at that time. So um our current facility, uh we operate out of three main buildings. Um and our staff occupies uh space in both those buildings. So as you can imagine, that there's a number of inefficiencies just by that design. And then um uh then getting back to the the square footage, you know, one of the major uh increases in square footage. That uh probably pops out at you is the fleet services garage. Um I think in twenty seventeen or our current uh fleet services is just about forty, about forty seven hundred square feet or so. And we're looking at ninety one hundred, so essentially doubling our square footage of our fleet services. Well, um technology's changed in twenty, thirty years. And squad cars uh don't provide or don't perform the same function as they did. I mean, obviously, there's still transportation, they get you to and from calls, but now they're more of the officer's office than anything else. And so there's a lot of technology that's involved, I spoke earlier about squad cameras. Uh but you know, there's defibrillators, there's P V Ts, there's computers, all those things are in our squads now that weren't twenty to thirty years ago. And we need to have an the ability to house those without having to worry about temperature changes and vandalism, theft, that type of thing. So really determine that um you know, we need a fleet services area that would house our entire fleet. And uh keep your uh investment safe. And so that's really what that uh includes and be just by design, if you're gonna have a drive in, drive out type of fleet services garage. Uh with an o- uh island, there there's obviously gonna be some unused space that you're gonna use for uh driving in and out essentially. And uh our current building, uh which again was um the forty seven hundred square feet, every stall has a garage door. So you you need a lot less square footage too, and then plus the our current garage doesn't house our entire fleet either. So that's one of the major square footage increases. Um the other one i- is patrol that really sticks out. And I it's one of the things I wanna talk about there is just, if you look at the 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 building diagram and everything that's in that pink or fuchsia color or whatever it is. Uh is patrol, while as part of the patrol area, there's also part of our fleet services area that's that color. Um and that's because that's our where our tactical vehicles are parked and and a space where uh we normally house or what. What we think will house our found bicycles and larger found property and that type of thing. We currently utilize like a one and a half stall garage for that purpose. And I I'm I'm not certain, but I don't think that that one and a half stall garage was um actually documented in our existing facilities. Um and that garage currently is full, probably ten months out of the year, we know, we have a bike auction and within thirty days, it's full of bikes again. So um so again, we need, we need that space, it's actually uh categorized under the patrol division. Um but again, those are two of the big in uh areas of increase or discrepancies that I see that you may have question on. Um ultimately, we just wanna get everybody in the same space and uh you know, the the cooperation between investigations, patrol, admin. Um is so much more efficient when you're under the same some same uh roof. Um and so uh that really is the main uh reason for, other than the space requirements, the the main reason for the new building. Um I don't know if you wanted to add anything to that, Matt?
You know, I think that was kind of the basis of when we started this project. Um I just wanted, you know, Tom to be able to share that with both the council and the public, so we have a, you know, just a an understanding of why we're at where we're are today. Um as you guys consider, like I said, I think it's important for us as we look at this, we're kind of getting to that point where I don't wanna call no return. But if there are some significant changes or if you don't like something, we're we're kind of at the point we need to know now before we, you know, before we we move forward. So that was part of the purpose that we brought this forward to you today. You know, one of the things that Andy did was provided on top of the report you received from John and his staff was kind of, we we showed an overall cost impact. Um to the city, and I wanna make sure that we highlight that, and that includes more than just the construction of of the the police facility. Um you know, I think we estimated that the, you know, the the building costs, site improvements and demolitions is about ten point three million. Couple of things we need to remember on top of that is, you know, it was about seven hundred and eighty thousand for us to purchase that lot. Um and then on top of that, you have various different other project costs, like your your fees, um the furniture equipment that John talked about. That's about one point five million. Um we've got about seven hundred and fifty thousand in professional services, that's to help cover the costs of old and integrity to to help, you know, move forward this project. But what what we also wanted to show to the council is, one of the requests that at our last meeting was to add the D M V, and so we've highlighted those costs to you. And then we've also included costs for um the Jefferson Street extension as we've shown, and then also the First Avenue improvements. Um to kind of coordinate with the 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 building design and the and the site work. And so when you look at all that, it's about fifteen and a half million dollars um is what we estimate that over that overall cost. So that's a, that's, you know, like I said, I wanted to make sure that there was a clear picture for everybody, that's not just the ten point three million for the the police station. Um but that it's kind of that that all in package, now obviously, we have some discussion to make. Do you, do you include the Jefferson Street and the First Avenue costs in this project? Those are, it's really kind of separate, but you know, we we see them as integral, um integral parts of kind of the the flow through that, through that area. And do you wanna include the D M V um in this in this final design as we look to move forward with the the planning commission and and eventual um bidding documents? And then I said, then Andy provided some some financing options to the council for your consideration. We've got three million that that we've already set aside for it, and so at the end of the day, you're looking at bonding about, you know, twelve point five million. Um but we've got some reserves um that we could tap in to to lower that debt. Um right now, um if you do borrow that amount, it's gonna be about a forty dollar a year impact to um to our citizens. And we had originally said, I think, you know, six months ago that we we saw the cost being a wash. But as as most of you know, um when we were first looking at this project, we estimated that the the cost per square square foot was gonna be about two hundred and forty dollars. Um today, as we're looking at it, um Contency is on a great job of going through that, and they're estimating that to be at two ninety two. And so you've seen a fifty two dollars of per square square foot increase, really in, I think, three years that we started uh looking at that. I think for those of you that are involved with the construction industry, that won't surprise you based off of some of the retail costs. But I just wanna make sure that we're we're forward and upfront with both the council and the public as we look at this project from more of a holistic approach. Andy, anything maybe I didn't touch on that you you wanted to add?
Uh you touched on a lot of it, Matt, um I just wanted to talk just a little bit about these bonds. They're gonna be general obligation, which is similar to the bonds we issue every year for our roadway projects, however, there's gonna be a slight difference. Uh these are general obligation capital improvement plan bonds. And one big difference between our our typical bonding is this uh bond issuance would have a thirty day reverse referendum period. So we have to be um somewhat aware that the the residents or citizens could petition city council. If they get enough uh petitions, they could actually uh put this on the ballot to to put it to vote to actually bond for this project. So that's that's one little difference between our our typical bonding. And then uh addition, uh we usually only go fifteen years on our bonding. This, if we're gonna go thirty years, we're gonna see a little higher interest rates. Um so just wanted to prepare the council for that, we will see higher interest rates just cause we're leveraging further out. Um and then I believe uh once we, once we get a good handle on our costs, then I'll get E L R S involved. Uh we wanna make sure that the amount we bond for this project doesn't have an adverse impact on our bond rating. I think a couple of years ago, when I had E L R S first look at this, they thought, yeah, you could bond up to perhaps twelve million without having an impact on your on your bond rating. Now that we're talking, that we're close to that twelve million bonding, we just have to make sure that what we do doesn't have that negative impact. We'd hate to see our bond rating go down, which would obviously impact our our interest rates. Um and then another aspect that we we need to look at as well, and that's why I wanna get E L R S involved, once we have solid costs. Is are we better off using the three million cash that city council is dedicated to this project? Are we better off using it to reduce our debt for the police station? Or are we better off using it to uh pay off some older debt that's at higher interest rates? So that's that's a a component that E L R S kind of uh pointed out to me last week, and that makes a lot of sense. If we can pay off old debt at higher rates, that could have a more beneficial impact on our overall debt levy than just simply applying that to the to the police debt.
Thanks, Andy, you know, like I said, there's a lot of information, obviously, for everybody to to swallow. And so I we wanna open back up for the council to ask any specific questions on um design, um layout, um project costs. Um you know, things that we've included, you know, you know, if we should take some of that out. You know, John, I I had maybe two quick questions for you, um you know, cause obviously it's a it's a pretty wide building. Um you know, and the conversations have come up about building upwards, and I don't know if you want to address why we haven't built upwards? Or if there is any specific reason, and maybe that's more even a question for Tom to answer on building out instead of up.
Um I don't know that we spent a lot of time talking about it, cause I think if we look back at some of the core values, it was really about collaboration and proximity. It's just one of those work groups and stuff like that, and uh certainly the chief can share more on that. So we've really been focusing on trying to make sure that everybody is is in the right location based on um who the groups that they are. Certainly, you could go up, but there is, you know, um you know, the you you would be into it for the cost of an elevator and added structure for floor and stuff like that. I find that if we could stay on one story, the costs are, you know, probably a little less expensive than going vertically. Uh maybe Pete, you can uh respond to that as well, but mostly from a design perspective, we were really looking at it more from a efficiency of operations.
Sure, and then I think the second question I had was just looking at um the the stormwater. Um I think the current plan has an underground system, um you know, and that's obviously something unique to to Hutchinson that uh that we don't have a lot of. But obviously, we don't, we haven't had a whole lot of development in the downtown area as well. And so I don't know if you wanna maybe just touch a little bit about the the underground system that's planned versus potentially a a pond or something. And I and I guess I don't know if the council has a desire to see a pond in downtown Hutchinson, but maybe you just wanna touch on that a little bit, so.
Uh well, as you start to think about best practices for stormwater management, there's really only two ways to deal with water quantity and water quality. And one of them is that traditional pond that you see in a lot of areas that have a little bit more open space. Uh in those situations where we don't have as much open space and we don't have the ability to do a pond, there's been a lot of uh techn- technological changes around underground storm structures and stuff like that. Certainly, I would want the the city engineer and others, the public works to be comfortable with what we're proposing for that. But they are pretty common um storm structure for more urban settings like what we have going on here. Um and so our goal would be to meet with engineering department to come up with the right solution for the city that everybody is comfortable with. I would struggle that we would have enough site area to do a pond without sacrificing some of the other stuff that you might wanna do on that site. It would occupy, have to occupy some of the site that's on the other side of of uh the Jefferson extension.
I guess that was all I had, I guess I'll hand it over to the council or to ask any questions.
Oh Matt, just so people understand how much it's gonna cost them, so you said it was like forty dollars per household for thirty years, like over a thirty year bond, just so it's all clear?
I- i- if if we go with what we plan right now, and that's um, you know, taking three million out of um that we've set aside out of the community improvement fund. Uh that includes if we're gonna fund the D M V, if we're gonna fund the the Jefferson Street, and if we're going to fund the the First Avenue. And if all the bids come in at what's been projected, you know, our hope is that, you know, in talking with Pete, we've got a very competitive market that our our costs will come under under our estimates. But I, you know, I'm just trying to be forward and 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 upfront with with everybody, including the council, you know. So some of those discussions are, do you wanna include the D M V? Do you think we should include the Jefferson Street extension in the in these project costs? Or is that something that goes on to our other bonding along with the, you know, the First Avenue? Um and so that's, like I said, an all encompassing, and if we don't use any other fund reserves, you know, we've talked about this just over a month ago. We've got a healthy general fund balance, the last time we tapped into it was to build the aquatic center. You know, we could easily buy down some of our um potential debt costs with some of those fund reserves too. So those, that's, so that that forty dollars a year chat is based off of us not going into any reserves, simply using the three million. And us funding everything that we've highlighted in this in this report tonight.
I'm just doing simple math, that's twelve hundred dollars a household over thirty years, you know, if you do it like that. Um I I guess I would throw it back on staff a little bit, like does Tom see the Jefferson extension as a vital part of the project? And also, like for the D M V, do you have like immediate plans for the um that D M V space? Are they too cramped, you know, I don't know if it's ideal over there, but it seems to work, you know, like. obviously now the council works there, knows what, what goes on there other than that we go get our tabs and stuff like everybody else, but we don't know the ins and outs of it.
Sure. Um, just a couple of things, at least on the DMV, and I'll maybe hand it over to, to Tom on the other aspect of it. You know, I think one of the reasons we moved it, we, we, it was asked to be included was, you know, there's some safety concerns. Um, i- and with the, the new technology that's coming, the new systems, we know we're going to have to do at least a remodel in this building. Um, you know, obviously we haven't gone down that route to determine what that cost um, is going to be. And so that, I think, was some of the, the basis of, okay, we're going to have to probably remodel our lobby, that front entrance to the DMV, you know, is it worth our while to move that with, you know, and to include that in the, the design with the, the new police station? And that was the request of the council back in, in December to do that. If they were to move, we would obviously convert that, that current space probably into another meeting room and, um, and some other office spaces, um, here at the, the facility. There's not an immediate need for us to grow in the, um, you know, regards to administrative, um, but it was more of kind of a, a customer service experience, um, safety and realizing they have more equipment that's going to be coming in. And that was why we included, uh, moving them over to the, to the, um, to the police station.
Matt, can you refresh my, uh, memory on what, uh, D- DMV, what, what that cost was?
You know, I think we've got a flat estimate of, you know, seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars to, to build that. I think it's just over two thousand square feet. And Pete, you can correct me if I'm wrong, you know, it's probably our best estimate, could be five hundred thousand, you know, when you take into account shared walls and all that. But, you know, right now we've used a number of seven hundred and I think it's seven hundred and twenty thousand roughly.
You're correct, Matt. Uh, we took an assumption based on that square footage, tried to delineate everything we could that pertained to that space, and that is the number we came up with.
Thanks, Pete.
Well, I guess I'll just get back to, to Chad's question regarding Jefferson Street extension. Um, you know, it's probably not an integral part of the, uh, project. However, the reason we really thought about including it is for safety concerns. Um, because of our limited access onto Adams Street, we actually have to of our, the majority, I should say, of our police traffic, our, um, vehicle traffic is emptying into that parking lot. Um, and so it, without some kind of a delineation there, I mean, we're competing with liquor hutch, pedestrian traffic, vehicle traffic, um, and all that, those types of things. I guess from my own personal spec- perspective, it doesn't have to be a road, but it certainly has to be some kind of a delineation there so we, so we can guide traffic through there safely.
Well, I think one of the deals too with, uh, doing the Jefferson, uh, thing is we do have interest in some of the outlots, so that would take care of, um, the street for them too, correct?
Yeah, there is some interest in outlots. Um, and, and I would echo what the chief said. I think it's more for delineation, you know, by the time you start putting in probably what, uh, you know, islands and all of that, um, into that area, I, I don't know if there was a significant cost reduction um, in that because we're not having to put infrastructure in. Um, and you know, the other thing too is that, you know, and not to place blame, but some of it was we can't get full access onto Adams. And so we really had to shift some of our, where that vehicle traffic to, is going to go. And so I see it more as a, a delineation um, of, like as the chief noted, so people have a clear kind of idea of where traffic's coming and going. As we're all familiar with that parking lot right now, especially with no kind of foods, you kind of just go at your own risk and take whatever paths that you want. This, I guess, makes it a little bit easier, um, in that standpoint, from that standpoint.
Well, I don't think, uh, costs are going to go any cheaper, so I think that, uh, we, at least I feel that that we should just do the whole project as it was presented.
Well, I have a couple of things I have questions on, and maybe you guys can answer it. Um, one of the things is the entrances to the DMV and also to the building, they are all hand ADA compliant, right? Because you said it was steps up into the building, so we want to make certain of that. Also, the, um, I, I noticed you had some glass or I don't know if it's those plastic partitions, but, you know, with COVID, we don't know how long we're going to be using partitions like that. Are you, is that going to be implemented into this building? Just because it's safer and because people now like that?
Uh, to both your questions, yes. Both entries will be accessible. I think we have the accessible route figured out on the The stairs are there as a nod to some of the old style police stations and connected to the park rest away, but any access will be, uh, off the sidewalk that's, uh, on grade and accessible to the entry. Um, regarding the glass, the glass that you saw in the lobby image, that is, uh, actually the glass, uh, for protection in that lobby area. So it serves two purposes. It gives us our separation in that area, uh, and it also gives us the, uh, safety in that location. We have been adding, uh, additional glass to some of the systems furniture stuff in response to COVID. Uh, and I don't know that I see that changing. I think you're right, people are used to that. I think that there's, there's a imminent amount of caution up there right now. And as we get into the furniture design, which we come after, when we get under construction, we'll see where that, uh, where the, where the, you know, pandemic is at at that point in time and, and what makes most sense. All the furniture vendors have reacted very well to the pandemic and incorporated a lot of that into their standards these days, so.
Well, thank you for that update. I also want to say I really like, um, the design. I also like the differences in the textures and all of that that you're putting into the building, wood, porcelain, tile, you know, it's, it's a beautiful design and you, I think it'll blend very well in our downtown, right across from the park. It's, it's nice. And I do like the DMV being there. I think for them, it's a safer area and why not have everything together? Thank you.
Brandon or Dave, do you have anything else for, any questions for him?
Um, I just had a question. Yeah, moving the DMV, I think is, is a good idea. Um, does that seven hundred and twenty thousand, does that include fixing up, uh, or what does city center look like after they move out, I guess? And then my other question, I think for Matt or whoever, was about the reserves. Um, how much is in there and what would that look like to maybe help offset some of the, you know, that, um, just kind of the forty dollars for thirty years or whatever, if that's what you were talking about with that.
Um, Andy, I'll maybe let you talk about some of the fund balance and what that potentially could, uh, could look like and how that could impact the, the project. You know, right now, um, obviously we would include in future capital, um, upgrades uh, to the, to the city center. Right now, there is not a drastic need for that space. Um, so I, I wouldn't see an immediate, uh, cost that we would have to incur with moving the, the DMV. So, Andy, anything on the, I guess, some of that fund balance and the potential, what that would mean?
Yeah, I did look at, um, the possibility of darn buttons here. Okay, there we go. Um, if we just applied another million dollars of fund balance based on my, my thirty year, uh, debt, it would bring down that impact of forty-three dollars per year to about thirty-five dollars. So not a, not a significant, but you know, if we can bring more cash to the table or we see the cost come down, which we think we're very conservative on our costs. We think we're conservative on our debt interest as well. So, you know, we really don't know how this is going to play out until we get our actual costs zeroed in and it, uh, interest rates zeroed in. But, you know, I, I, it looks like it comes down about eight bucks for a million. Come down, uh, two million and, and, and reserves, you're probably looking at fifteen, sixteen dollar cash reduction uh, for that annual impact of the median home.
Andy, what does that mean for our general fund, our, our fund balance and whether it's general fund or community improvement? I mean, we're still at healthy levels to where that's not going to be a significant impact.
Right. Um, that two point three million that I've identified in my memo, that's the amount above the fifty percent fund balance that we're kind of looking to maintain. So that, that's a very healthy fund balance. And then on the community improvement fund, two million dollars of unreserved, uh, that's not all the cash we have in the community improvement fund. We have cash set aside for other projects uh, in our capital improvement plans. That two million is cash right now that is not flagged for any projects.
Thank you.
Dave, did you have anything else for anybody?
No, I think both, both, uh, Brandon covered, uh, what I had in my, uh, brain, uh, my mind and then, uh, Mary too. So, thank you for that.
And like I said, you know, and in my, you know, memo to the council as well, you know, you really, the question tonight, we're not asking for any action because that will come at a later time, but you know, are you comfortable with the design? The size, the layout of the facility and the site? And then, you know, are you, you know, comfortable, at least at this point moving forward with those, uh, you know, knowing what estimated project costs are, because like I said, if, you know, obviously we've still got a couple of steps, including planning commission approval, um, you know, going out for bids, uh, getting bids back that will, you know, help make some final determination. So we're not setting our, anything is stolen tonight, but we're, we're getting to that point where it's going to be tough to start making changes, I guess, or, or, or turning it around, if you want to say.
Andy, this is Dave. Can you, uh, probably when we get closer to final cost, can we run some scenarios as to, uh, which would be the best way to go?
Oh, definitely. Yeah, I think, you know, it, it's very preliminary now to really zero in. We, we're looking at a thirty year bonding right now. Uh, that looks to be the most advantageous for this level of cost. But if these costs come down, twenty-five year debt may be very advantageous. So, yeah, there's, there's going to be a lot of scenarios we ask um, Ellers, our financial advisors to, to run. Um, there's going to be a lot of analysis they'll need to do and help us out. So, yeah, there, there's plenty of time for that.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody have anything else for either Tom or Andy or, or Matt?
Yep, and I'd also note, we've got John and Pete here, um, and Paige as well, from, uh, Wold and Contagility to, you know, Pete's running the, kind of more the construction side. He's, you know, his experience is, uh, dealing with contractors and and dealing with project costs. And obviously John and Paige are dealing more with your design. So if you've got any questions even on what, you know, what's maybe even going on in the, the market, maybe Pete, maybe you want to just touch on what you're seeing right now in the market when it comes to projects and bidding, so.
Sure. Uh, what we're seeing out there right now is still some pretty aggressive bidding. Uh, definitely, there's been some material costs. You've kind of heard some of the commodities, uh, listening to the news with, uh, lumber and steel, uh, some of the other materials, you know, you look at steel, the precious metals, it's your copper and your wire. Uh, it's your rebar and your concrete and things of that nature. But overall, right now, there's a lot of people vying for work. Uh, we're already receiving a lot of interest in this project. Uh, we just bid a small project out in Crosby, Minnesota last week and had, I think we had eight mechanical contractors go after that. And we ended up with about three hundred thousand under, uh, design development estimate that we presented up there. So felt very comfortable with some very aggressive bidding. Uh, I'm expecting to see the same thing. A lot of the packages we'll put out, uh, we're going to hit the streets hard, spend a lot of time on the phone and try to maximize our exposure for people to obtain this work.
Thanks, Pete.
Mary, anything else? Well, thanks everyone for the update.
Thanks, John, Paige and Pete for sticking around tonight.
Great. Thank you, everybody. Mayor and council, have a good evening.
Have a good evening, everyone. Thank you.
Yeah, you as well. Thank you. Alrighty, um, for governance, uh, we have minutes, reports from committees, boards or commissions. We have, uh, December two thousand twenty preliminary financial statement and local tax, sales tax update. And we have the library board minutes from January of two thousand twenty-five.
Said you were ready before you move on. I, I, I think it's important to highlight from those governance, if you take a look at the twenty twenty preliminary financial statement report, you know, I think this plays a little bit into our conversation tonight about, you know, fund balance and stuff like that. We had a very significant surplus um, at the end of twenty twenty and, you know, it's, it's over four hundred thousand dollars and, and surplus, things even closer to five hundred thousand. Dollars. So, he, as you think about financing, um, obviously for this project and moving forward, obviously a combination of some of that CARES money that we received, um, the, the reduction in costs to, to, to offset our in regards to COVID really played into that, into that large surplus that we had in, in this past year. So, I think it's just important to highlight, especially when we start talking about financings for a, a big project like this, so.
Yeah, thanks, Matt. Yeah, I think that, uh, once we get a little closer, like Dave said, I, I'd like to see a couple of different scenarios because I, you know, anything to lessen the burden, I think, would, would help out, so. Uh, is, uh, is John there tonight?
The only staff person here is myself. Tom, if you have any in-depth IT questions or, uh,
Alrighty, uh, alrighty, uh, is, uh, Kent, Kent's not here either tonight, huh?
He's gone this week, so.
Is Mark there?
Mark's gone this week too. It's, uh,
Oh, my gosh.
I stopped in a holiday and so I, I've got some legal and engineering, uh, background in me, so.
Alrighty, well, uh, Dave, why don't we start with you tonight?
Well, I hope we don't step on anybody's toes, but, uh, I've been asked a lot of questions about the pool over the last couple of weeks. And, uh, I say we are working on that and, uh, P R E C is, uh, doing their thing and Matt's doing his thing, so I guess basically that is a big item of interest right now that I see on the street, so that's my input.
Well, David, it's a little cold opening right now, um, but, uh, yeah, we're, we're looking to, we're looking to put a plan in place and I hope, hopefully within the next, you know, obviously hopefully by the end of April, we'll have be able to communicate to the public what that will look like, so.
Thank you.
Mary, Brandon, how about you?
Uh, nothing here tonight, thank you.
Looks like you're enjoying the outdoors tonight, huh?
I'm in Louisiana.
I guess you are outdoors. Well, thanks for joining us. What, what's the temperature down there?
I don't know. It's a little brisk right now. It's probably sixty, but it's, it's very nice.
Well, thanks for joining us. Mary?
Um, well, spring is just around the corner, so as I'm out walking my dogs, I notice, or I'm appalled at how many people do not clean up after their dogs, you know? I think we just need to keep reminding people, if you're walking your dogs, pick up your dog's business, you know? Also, I had a phone call from a lady who is really asking exactly what the cat laws are. You know, the birds are all out now, they're nesting and they have cats that are killing their birds. So, if you have cats, please keep them in your own yard, in your friend's den yard or on a leash or in your house, but don't let them just be out wandering, you know? And that's it for me. I also just want to thank each and every one of you for the kind words and the heartfelt sympathies you've given our family. And thank you. We appreciate it. That's it.
Thanks, Mary. Uh, Chad? Uh, Chad?
Um, yeah, I would reiterate what Mary said about the dog droppings. It seems to be, I took a couple of bike rides around town last week in the ice weather. It seems pretty bad this year. And even downtown, like on the downtown sidewalks, people are walking their dogs on the sidewalk and leaving little presents for everybody downtown to clean up. And it's pretty gross, um, in my opinion. But, um, other than that, I didn't have anything, um, anything to add other than the whole loose line supposedly got swept off today. So if you were out there this weekend, it was full of winter debris and stuff. And it, it got cleaned up and only snow in town is behind the sanctuary. So, um, just be careful if you're walking out there because it's pretty icy behind there. But otherwise, all the bike trails are pretty much snow-free right now. Um, and, uh, everybody have a good week and enjoy the nice weather.
Well, Chad, I can say that there's ice and snow down the, between Michigan and Arch Street. That, uh, little stretch there is all snow packed yet.
Yep, it's getting pretty light though, like under the bridge, there's a little bit. But, um, but yeah, on the trail down by your house, it's, it's pretty clear now, which is nice.
Alright, thanks, Chad. Matt?
You know, you guys kind of stole my stuff, my, stole my thunder. It's the one thing that we've been dealing with, and we did post something on social media through our parks pages, uh, is the dog waste. And then we've even noticed it in Library Square. So I just encourage, um, dog owners to make sure they clean up after themselves. Otherwise, I don't have anything else.
Well, you know, you guys took the pressure off me because my, uh, wife said to make sure that I talked about picking up after their dogs. So, uh, with that, uh, everybody, uh, be careful out there with, you know, with the snow and the melting, freezing and, uh, still a little bit of gravel out on the roads, right, Chad, with the bikes, so?
And glass, you know, I, I'm going to be thankful on the street sweepers to get a chance to get out there. But they're probably waiting for the March blizzard before they start sweeping. But there's a lot of glass out there right now, so be careful with your dogs and kids and whatnot.
Alrighty, uh, that's all I had, so, um, entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave to adjourn. Roll call, Mary?
Aye.
Brandon?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.